I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. I will call to order the April 2023 regular meeting of the SAG Harbor Board of Trustees. Welcome to all. We are also out on Zoom. And the call to order will begin with the review of the minutes, item two. The meeting, regular meeting of March 14, the budget meeting of March 15, the special meeting of March 17, and the budget meeting of March 29. Would hear a motion on bank to approve those minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
They are agreed to. I will start with the mayor's report. And actually with a piece of good news, which we're always in the market for those. Sometime in the mid 20s, the state changed the way it did what it did. What they used to call member items, cork barrel, and just local grants of one kind or another to put the entire process through the governor's office. And local councils were created called Regional Economic Development Councils. And in 2017, my first year, I think that I was around here, we applied for $2 million, $50,000 to that process for the work to be done on Long Wharf. Long Wharf was about 100 years behind in its maintenance and underneath and all of the things you don't even want to know. And so we applied for $2 million, $2 million, $50,000. And while that was pending, the cinema applied as well for money. And both of us were granted money of the 2050, 2 million 50 we needed. 1.5 went to the cinema, 550 went to us. We were grateful for the 550. We were disappointed to lose the other money, glad to see it went to our neighbor cinema. In 2018, I applied again for the remainder, the 150, the 1 million 5. Only to be told, we can't give you any money this year. We gave you what you asked for last year. Okay, 2019, applied again. And very frustrating because the local board did not put us in the loop. There's an intermediate board that does it at the state level. And we were looking at another year of not getting that money. And the only time since I've been in this position in this village, I called the governor, told him the story. And on December 16th, I believe it was 2019, the governor said, yes, you can have the 1.5 million. And in the publication of the governor's list, we led the list. We were all very excited. And I want to tell you that we have spent the time from then till now trying to actually get the money. And last week, strike up the band, 2, the 1.5 million dollars actually arrived in the good hands of the village of SAG Harbor. And I want to tell you that on the 7th of April, the money is in the bank. It is dedicated to relieving the debt that we've incurred and part from the long wharf. And I want to ask you all to rise with me and thank you. Thank the person who got this done, and that's Kate.
The
absolutely. I want to give this young woman a standing ovation. She delivered the money. She brought it in. We've embarrassed her so sufficiently now. She may never do it again, but take that home and appreciate.
Connie deserves a very big round of applause.
And Connie as well. I'm sorry. Yes, indeed.
Connie was great help on this. And that be it.
So I think that's one flower per month for years. Next up, I want to talk about John Steinbeck Park. As you can see, there's been a lot of very active work in the last couple of weeks. This is part of the plan that's been around for at least five years now. And involves the completion of the topographical work, which is associated with the amphitheater. The stones, which is are all of granite donated and cut by an outfit in Montauk and delivered. I think there are 39 such stones now in place. That work is done. And the next step this week that was accomplished was the placement and planting of at least 10 red oak. Red oak are native and very attractive trees, and they're nicely spaced. One thing, you've all been down there, you know that people will drag a heavy picnic table up onto the slope of the bridge to be under a tree to get out of the sun. So Ed Hollander has had in the plan ever since the beginning to have a couple of groves of clusters, three or four trees here, there, and so forth. So that work you are able to see now. The grading of the entire property is underway. And we have managed to find the money and the goodwill with the people who do landscaping and gardening on the East End, that the entire property will be sodded. It's being topsoiled now and will be sodded. And we will open on the 27th of May in time for Memorial Day weekend. So this phase, which Ed and I casually referred to as phase one, will be essentially completed this spring. The very next step that we're still trying to fund up is to complete a railing along the boardwalk or the walkway that will travel across the bulkhead, under Harder Bridge, and out around onto that bulkhead and go all the way to the windmill. And that's essential for public safety and also in particular for our compliance with ADA, the Americans with Disability Act. We will also need to scrounge up some support and money for changing the portions of that walk that are now gravel, because for ADA, we need to get something other than hard. It's large travel and it's not sufficient for ADA compliance. So it's nice when you see something we've dreamed and talked about for a long time coming true. And we are booked, as we have been in recent years, for the music festival, for Harbor Festival, the Antigone government with which we are twinned in one of these twin city projects. We'll be back in August for Antigone Festival and many, many other dates that have been filling in. So the work is done when we're being done, we will put the, for lack of any newer plan yet, we will replace the missing sections of the split rail fence, particularly in the time we're going to have it signed off where it's going to look awfully good. We tempted to go on there, but it will be closed to walking. And the right mix, and oh, you should mention that just before the siding, the irrigation for the entire park will be in place. Some of that has already been there, got a little battered by the work. And but we'll have a full irrigation system. If you notice, as you come off the bridge, there's a box, one of those tan boxes. That's a RPZ valve, I think is what it's called. And it actually delivers water to the irrigation system. So when you see Ed Hollander around town, he is the mad genius behind this work. And part of his genius is to get it for nothing. He's got a lot of friends who participated in this. And we will do sometime this summer, there will be a plan to do a fundraiser for the Phase Two work, which we'll discuss on another date. Everybody in town noticed that there's some paving going on. This is the follow-up work to the PSEG electric wiring work that went on. And that work is an obligation of the utility when it turns up your main street or any of one of your streets. And they work through a contractor, a very substantial contractor, who know, another people, a number of people were concerned, well, this was happening during holiday week. We didn't pick the date. They picked the date, and if you don't take the date, you might wait until the fall or the following year. And it's not that they're not being nice, it's that they travel, if you were down here this morning, they travel with a virtual army of vehicles and people. And they come through and they lifted the old pavement, ground the ground, put the topping in there, and then managed to get all of the pavement in place to the point where they were able to spot all the striping, and that work will be done tomorrow. I can also announce the start of the pollen season. So the inconvenience is real. We understand that. They lived up to their promise that they would get the tasks of both Monday and Tuesday done in the first half of the day. And they started at the crack of dawn at 6:00 AM each of those days. And if you see any of those folks, a nice thank you to them. And Michael is here for Public Works. Our guys have been out there with them, protecting and protecting the workers and helping advance the work. So it was a triumph of the contractors, the utility delivering what they were obliged to deliver, and TBW and highways making sure it was well done, and it has been well done. And we thank you, Michael and the team. In connection with both Long Wharf and the activity around, there have been questions about the project that's underway for the rebuilding and expansion of the transient dock. Stories goes back, you know, a century, but in the winter, two winters ago, when we had significant late fall storms, excuse me, we took terrific damage on our floats. The floats are all connected. They have flotation and wood timber decking, but the connections are all steel. In the water damage was so severe that a number of them were actually severed and looked as if they were cut with a saw. That's how much pressure was applied. And we had a couple of years ago, started searching for money to do the transient dock. And we've put together a package there. And so that work began some weeks ago. And if you look at it today, for example, you'll see all the old float material sitting on top of one another. That is all being replaced with new flotation. And all of the pilings and the poles to anchor a new wave wall to protect the docks, the floating docks is starting. Somebody asked me this morning about the height of those pilings. The ones you see further out will be lower than you see. They're in their first placement. They will be driven further and then all brought to a level, very uniform to the one levels that you already see. We have to hope to have that done by, we thought Memorial Day, but we've had a supply chain problem on the flotation. We've had to substitute a supplier. We're now aiming for the middle of June to have that done. Our real traffic on that facility begins by the 4th of July. It's a big attraction that brings tourists and boaters here, and it is an important part of our boating economy these days. These are my reports. I will now shift over to the departmental reports that fall to me. And I was going to do them together. All right. Why don't we do the treasurer's report next? Tim, come on up.
Good evening, board. This is for February 2023. The revenues are up 12.8 million. Our revenues remain up from the prior year by 80,000. To date, the docks are up $550,000, which was budgeted. The building department to date has revenue of 582,000, which is 16,000 over the prior year. The just score is still below their prior year level by 101,000. They're sitting currently at 352,000 this year. They're still projected to be over their budgeted amounts for revenue. And then interest also, we've earned $50,000, $80,000 through February as of so far, it's going to our reserves. Special wise, we're 64% of our budget at 12.2 million. Prior year, we were about 10 million. There's no major purchases in February. I just wanted to note that that given project is covered by 115,000 from PSEG. And the rest is through our chip program, so that's covered through the grant as well as kind of loan current grant every year. And then also I just want to ask all supervisors that we want to have all the purchase charges in by May 5th for the purchasing event this year, so as we finish out May. And then that's it for the treasurer's report. Do you want me to touch on budget or quickly?
Why don't we do that when we get to the action items? Or public hearing item? Thank you, Tim. We'll now give departmental reports, beginning with the building department. The noteworthy event there is that in January, we saw a falloff from the year before almost $75,000 in fees to a figure of about $43,000. And everybody knows that there's been a falloff in real estate activity. And the net number of projects being applied for has simply reduced significantly. And then in February, we saw an even further drop in the level of activity. But I'm happy to report that in March, the level of activity went back up so that the revenue number for March came in at $98,000. I make this report with the caveat that it's not just about the revenue, but we're obliged to let you know what's happening with revenues. We are with the leadership of the department, spending a lot more time on actual plans, on compliance, on review, on supporting and assisting our boards, the regulatory boards. But it is, it is an important part of the fiscal picture of the village as well. Code enforcement was active in the month, total of 10 notices, violations, all which were addressed, 18 inspections, each of which yielded a, an outcome. And moving over to the dock report, the dock is obviously a very active part of the village right now. And the bookings for the season ahead are running ahead of 2023 by a figure of $141,000, $142,000 on the season ahead. So in terms of our fiscal planning and our management team planning for managing all that activity, we're looking forward to a very vigorous season. And the consequences of a vigorous port activity is that it impacts all up and down Main Street in a very positive way. The big challenge that Bob had to address was the change in the flotation. And was successful with our contractors in getting that solved. You don't notice these things very much, but the ice heaters and bubble hose have all been removed. We, in the course of the regular work, we replaced one piling at B dock. And the first two sections of the dinghy dock were removed and new floats were put there. The dinghy dock is over between the yacht club, Breakwater Yacht Club and the shipyard. And that was in serious need of some renewal as well. The old docks, or that you made a note here, the old docks that you see sitting on top of one another are expected to be removed by the contractor in the next couple of days. Between Bob and our assistant harbor master, Chris Durie, interviewed several individuals for the assistant dock master's positions as we are losing most of our current staff in August because of the early start of the college new year. But there's an item here making the appointments for this year. Finally, Public Works. The Ryson sewer connection was made. Recall that this was an extension of the sewer connections up into Ryson Street, up to number 24, paid for by a resident along there. That has been completed, and I think it's always good to add a paying customer to the system.
Absolutely.
The catch basins around the village are being cleaned by, I hate to use this term, the super sucker truck. But we only have, all of this catchment we have gets cleaned every spring so it can accommodate more runoff. The, as I pointed out, the wire job that PSEG was doing has been completed throughout the village. And we're in the repaving stage of the trench lines that were formed and the pavement that was disturbed. Patching of roads continues, cleaning of all the rain gardens. And parking lots has been completed. The sweeper is back from the shop and it's out there working. And the annual leaf pickup, spring leaf pickup, which is shorter than the fall, is going to run from April 16 to 22. It's just a week long. It's a one-time pickup, and it will include light brush, and we mean light brush. We don't want trees out there to be carried away. That completes my report. So it turned now to Deputy Mayor Gardella for police, fire, ambulance, public safety.
Thank you, Mayor LaRaca. I'd like to start by thanking the police officers, the firefighters, and the ambulance corps members for their service to the village this month. I'll start off with the police department report. Our village police responded to 687 calls for service in the month of March. So that's just over 22 calls a day. So we have two patrol cars on duty at a time during the day and night. So that's about a call an hour. We're just over an hour. Out of those calls, we had seven unlicensed operations of the vehicle. We had five suspended registrations, one bench warrant, and we had nine motor vehicle accidents. So as you know, traffic in the village is a problem. And I'm afraid that number, I hope that number doesn't go up, but it's a sign that people are starting to move around. Spring is here. We had 13 arrests and we had 76 uniformed traffic tickets issued. So that's, that's our police report. The fire department, in the month of March of 2023, the fire department volunteered for over 1,167 man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to 49 calls for service. These calls included one electric bicycle battery fire. I don't know if you've been paying attention to the news, but these battery operated bicycles have become a fire hazard. So be careful.
There's been some fatalities.
There's been some fatalities in the city. I think there was 21 last year. We had one working structure fire and we received mutual aid from North Sea, East Hampton and Bridgehampton. As we get prepared for the upcoming summer months, we attended a lithium ion battery fire seminar and also a search and rescue navigation hosted by the Coast Guard. During the early evening hours of March 14th, the members responded to a working structure fire that was quickly extinguished. Later in the month, we had a Class A drill at the Suffolk County Fire Academy where we practice doing interior attack and honing our skills there. Lastly, to help celebrate St. Patrick's Day, a number of the members attended the parade in Montauk. So I would, I would like to mention that and thank Kevin O'Brien Jr. for his service as our chief. He will be leaving at the end of the month and turning over his duties to Andrew Bloedon, who will be our new 7130. Michael Guyer will become our 7131 First Assistant Chief. And JR Wilson was, we had elections this Thursday, was elected as our Second Assistant Chief. So I want to congratulate all three of them and wish them success. So the ambulance corps, in the month of March, we had 52 emergency calls. We had four work nights, two meetings, three training sessions for a total man-hours of 764. As we checked the numbers early this year, we're on average with the calls that we did last year. So we're on pace to continue that trend. And as I had stated before, we're going to be looking into other ways. We're going to look into the collecting, possibly collecting insurance money on ambulance calls. It's a very hot subject. It's been going around the East End. As I said, my position is that the taxpayers within the service district should not pay any copays or deductible. But it's something that we're just in discussions about. I don't want to leave any money on the table. If we can collect, I think that we should. That's just my opinion. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Tom. Payden for the sewer department and village grants.
Thanks, Jim. Quick question before I start, Tom. How difficult is it to put out a lithium ion battery fire?
Andrew.
As the chief. Very difficult. Right. Okay. Thank you. I'm just curious. We'll start off with the sewer report for the month of March. Total gallons received in the month is 1.766 million. We removed 39,000 gallons of sludge. DMR reports were forwarded on 4/4 of this month. Suffolk County inspection date, our next inspection is going to be 4/10. So I guess this was prepared before, so that would have been yesterday. Yep. The New York State DC inspection date is open. That's never announced beforehand. And we had no complaints for the month of March. And the summary of operations, wastewater treatment plant is running well. It's under all permitted levels. And we're now operating on two basins out of five. We have Mr. Paul Harding from the DCL for an inspection. We have not received his report as of yet. I will share that with you when we get it. We had BioTriad, who are a service company, out to replace the media and the odor scrubber. We have one odor scrubber down there servicing two tanks, and it's in an experimental phase. So as we develop more data on that, we'll look at expanding it and making it more permanent. And as the mayor reported earlier, the sewer main from 24 Ryson is complete, and they're now on the system. From grants, one to report, which is some good news, when we applied to East Hampton, CPF water quality for area L. There was two aspects to that grant. One was for the right-of-way work, which is the work on the street. And then we had asked also if we could get grants to connect all the homes so that all the homeowners would have a fairly substantial subsidy, if not a complete subsidy, for the cost of their connections. And East Hampton asked us to make two separate applications, one for each. The first, for the right-of-way work, and the village property had been approved. And we got approved for right around $600,000. So all the homeowners in that area who will be connecting will be able to cover most, if not all, of that cost. We're still waiting for New York State money, so that was declined this, this round. So we're going to be reapplying and looking at other avenues to finance this project. But it's another step in the right direction. It's no, that's K. L is Ryson Street area. It's, I can share, I'll email you a map, sort of going through all the streets. L is East Hampton, it's on the east side of the town, and K is the south side, South Hampton side, which is sort of the rice, around Bridge, Rose. Yeah. That will conclude my reports, Mayor.
Thank you.
So what I, excuse me. So what I, excuse me, I failed to mention that we have collected more donations for the fireboat. Mr. Rob Weisenthal of Blade donated $22,000. And also Mr. Ed Hollander, who's very generous donation given to the fireboat. And the SAG Harbor partnership, as I understand, has collected about another $9,000. So the community has really come out, not just those people, but a vast number of community members have come forward and, and donated towards the boat. I just wanted to mention that, put that on the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Aiden. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Paul, planning board.
Before I start, I have a question. I have a tree in my yard that has these giant pine cones.
Right.
To drop. Are those sticks or are those leaves?
It's considered light brush.
It's light brush.
Yeah, that's what I would say it is.
Thank you very much. Playing board, we are just sort of a general discussion about various topics. Nothing formally planned yet, but we're just trying to communicate a lot with the judge on the board. And so I have nothing actually formal to announce, but we are working towards our master comprehensive plan, which we hope to get to general in the next months to come. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And last but not least, Ed Hay for Mash Park and the Justice Court. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with the Justice Court. The as I've been reporting for the last several months, revenues continue to be significantly lower than prior years, back down to the 2015 levels roughly. And I think I've mentioned in the past that we have a new employee in the Justice Court. Michelle Fields, who's fantastic, and she's been compiling more and more information for us to help analyze what's going on with the Justice Court, because it's not just about the revenues. And so she has provide annual stats comparison over the last decade as well and shows that really the activity levels down in the Justice Court across the board. All all activity in the Justice Court, whether it's vehicle traffic law and parking, which are two major activity sources, are down significantly as well from prior years, you know, 50% lower than prior years potentially. So I think, you know, with that data now, it's not just parking coming off, it's other things as well that maybe we should just get together and compare and do a deeper dive into what's been going on really now versus the previous. And hopefully it's just a good explanation that we can understand. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull in the deputy mayor, police chief, police commissioner to help analyze some of this and, and do a little root cause analysis if possible to, to understand what's going on. So that's the report of the Justice Court. I think also then I'll move to the park. Mash Park continues its negotiations with the school, which have been very productive over the last year plus to try to transition from these annual license agreements they've had with the school. I think all the work that the two boards have done together over the last year plus, two years plus has created a lot, a stronger commitment between the two entities for longer-term planning and longer-term commitment. So that the park is working with the school on a license agreement that's an automatic renewal agreement while they're working through the the long-term capital planning needs for the boat, for both entities as well and the funding associated with that. Those are all still works in progress. No news, news to report, except that both sides continue to push forward. And I think later on the agenda, we've got a, you know, an event for the park that I'll speak to a little bit more, the 5K run, when that comes up on the agenda. But I do want to commend both the school board and the park board for working well together through a lot of shifting sands around trying to identify long-term capital planning needs for the school and the park and funding sources for both as well. And that's the park report as well.
Thank you. Excuse me. In my report, I skipped over the, the legal event of the week and I want to ask Ed and particularly Liz to report on the article 78 litigation. That was the subject of an order that was released yesterday, I believe. Recall that after the Affordable Housing Initiative was announced and we enacted three local laws here over the course of last year. And we were, not long after they were enacted, taken to court by Safe SAG Harbor, which is a civic group and a number of individual plaintiffs. That matter came before the court over the last month and an order was issued yesterday. So I would ask Liz to describe that order and its meaning for the village.
Sure. So this is the litigation of Safe SAG Harbor versus the Village of SAG Harbor. It was seeking to annul adopted local laws 11 and 12, which amended the SAG Harbor Village zoning code to allow for a special exception permit to, in, in the village for affordable housing in the village office district and business district. And then also local law 11 established the administration portion, amending chapter 150 of the village code. Although local law, I think it was 13, with regard to the accessory apartments was not challenged. That local law actually, a lot of those sections of, of the accessory apartment law depend on chapter 150 sections of law. So we're going to have to look at that carefully and amend it. So anyway, the judge reviewed all of our papers from both sides and held for Safe SAG Harbor and annulled those two local laws. So that, that's essentially what happened. And they based it on the village's secret review, alleging that the village failed to take what's considered a hard look at the environmental impacts of that particular local law. And although I don't necessarily agree with some of the facts cited in the undisputed fact section of the decision, his decision is very clear. We had oral argument on this case on March 20th and the judge was very quick to respond with a decision. So that's what we have. I believe the notice of entry, which was the next thing that the other side would have to do, was filed today as well. And that triggers the time within which the losing party can either appeal or make motions.
Thank you, Liz. To the extent my colleagues and I have had a chance to review, meet with Liz just this afternoon, we're going to take some time before we make any decisions about a next step in terms of the litigation and in terms of the Affordable Housing Initiative. So don't look for any headlines from us right now. We have, we want to digest it, understand the implications. The connection to the one law that was not annulled is nevertheless significant. So we have one large project that's been applied for, as you know, and we have some accessory development unit applications that have been filed. And so we need to examine the impacts on those applications and where we are going forward. But we're going to take some time as a board to digest that. This will conclude our department, mayor's report, treasurer's report, departmental report. And now open the floor for public comments on these matters contained in our reports only, not anything that yet before us. So Nada, do you want to be heard?
I'm sorry. Can we just have a motion to accept those reports?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there it goes. We hear a motion to accept the mayor, treasurer and departmental reports. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Allos and favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you, Nada.
Now that a bar is a workshop, I'm a little confused about the pilings there to protect the, the transient dock. But is the transient dock also being extended out?
Yes.
It is. And that'll be about eight more slips, I heard. Is that correct?
I was not clear in my own head what the number was. I had said six to eight. I think you're right. It's eight.
All right. Thank you. But it is combined. We're extending.
It's part of the, it's absolutely, it's been part of the project from the very beginning.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Eddy, 96 Hampton Street. I'm a member of the Harbor Committee. And I brought a prop. My prop is the second page of the Harbor Committee agenda from last Thursday, April 6. And two items on it. One is application and request for LWRP comments from the Department of State on an issue here in SAG Harbor. And the second one is exactly the same. Application request for LWRP comments from the Department of State on another issue development here in SAG Harbor. And my point is, is that we have the Department of State in Albany asking us for our opinion vis a vis the LWRP on two relatively small projects on private property. And we have something that's going on here, which is, as you just said, six to eight, likely eight docks expanding along the water. And I was here in 2018, as were a couple of my other colleagues on the Harbor Committee. And we were very careful about preserving the view shed going to the west. It was a big deal. And there was changes made in the plan on the basis of the LWRP. And I think best management process here would have been for these plans to have come before the Harbor Committee to review it from an LWRP point of view. That's one point. The other point, which is a little similar but different, is there's a lot of talk about overdevelopment. I think I've heard everyone if you talk about overdevelopment and the problems that we have with overdevelopment. And I think we have overdevelopment on our streets and our roads and our avenues, but we also have overdevelopment on our waterfront. And I think this is one of the instances of the addition of docks that can be construed as overdeveloped. I don't know because I haven't seen the plans, but I think we have a real challenge to the view shed, which is the LWRP of what we're going to be able to see looking west and what we're going to be able to see going north from Windell Beach. It's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Not again. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. How are you?
Hello. Good evening. Caroline, 187 Jermaine Avenue. Could you please explain a wave wall?
A wave wall?
Didn't you say part of the pilings were for a wave wall?
Oh, yes. A wave wall is, I guess the easiest to describe it as sort of a wooden constructed version of a breakwater that is meant to interrupt wave activity against an area where boats are docked. So it's a very short relative to the breakwater. It's a short version in wood of a breakwater.
And did you obtain DEC permits or New York State permits to construct the wave wall?
We've gone through, this has been on the books for a number of years. We've been through all of the permit processes. To my knowledge, there is nothing outstanding.
So you obtained all of those permits?
That's my understanding, yes.
And why do you feel we need a wave wall?
I think the engineers and the harbor master and the boating community was looking for greater protection. The transient dock takes a lot of wave action. And this is an attempt to reduce the impact of that. Some of that's created by the boating traffic that passes over the outer breakwater and goes under the bridge into the cove. They, the number of boats in there that traffic during the day create a lot of wave activity. So it was, it was meant as a protection, to enhance the protection of the docks that are there.
I understand. I'm very fortunate to get to sail quite a bit on the waters here. Wednesday nights, et cetera, and other people, on other people's boats on the weekends. And I've sat several times on a Saturday or on a Friday around five o'clock coming back from a race. And I've seen the six packs and the 12 pack boats come in. And I understand, once you enter the breakwater, it becomes a no wake zone. But they come screaming in and then they slam their brakes on and the wave continues. It's such a great effect into the harbor. Wouldn't also extending the wake, no wake zone to marker two and in some way enforcing it more? Because I know the harbor master does all he can and has his hands full, given the amount of boats that we have in this, but what will the effects of the wave wall have on scouring of the further, of Windell Beach? And wouldn't it be better also to patrol, you know, to extend the no wake zone? Because I've watched those J Y 15 boats go out and kids in the opties, sunfish. I've been on a J 70 when a boat comes screaming past. I'm not that great of a sailor. And it's not fun and it's dangerous and it's causing scouring.
These are all helpful thoughts. Thank you. I would tell you that we did change the protocol from five miles an hour to no wake. So the no wake, the prohibition on creating a wake now is not connected to any particular speed because it varies from boat to boat. So we did that a couple of years ago.
Shouldn't every boat be responsible for its own wake regardless?
Absolutely, absolutely. But in terms of what, what we were able to define was that simply saying five miles an hour in a certain boats that you let them come in at five miles an hour, it's too much. So the measure is no wake. It's, it's a stronger prohibition, if you will. I agree. It takes work. When you talk about extending it to the outside of the breakwater to the second buoy, the, the second green, right? Okay. I understand the.
There's a lot of people that's spoken to. I've canvassed the boating community that's out there, any little board voters. And they all agree extending it out will be a big help.
Okay.
I'm not the same. I have a question. Are you referring to if a boat's coming in and complies with all of our rules and regulations about no wake, that the wake follows them in, that they create a wave that then just keeps, keeps on moving?
Correct.
And so even though they're in full compliance, they're still going to be a wake?
They can come in and they can be coming in at a nice clip and they slam on the brakes and the wake is considerable that will follow. So you need to slow down and it's the wave action.
Yeah.
So I think.
It's like pebbles in a pond.
Right. But in terms of defining it as no wake as opposed to a speed, whether it's a wake that follows you or whatever, you have to stop in time to not create that wave.
So that's your wake.
So it is what they, you said there, even if they're complying, they're not complying if they stop so late as to create a following wave.
Gotcha. Okay. So the no wake zone.
But these are good points to be taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To seal the extended plan and so forth. I'm sorry. Do I view it on the SAG Harbor website?
I don't know if it's up on the website, but come, come in, we'll certainly have it.
Okay. Lovely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. That'll close the public. I'm sorry, one more. Oh, yes, sir. Will. Will, sharp comma, Will. How are you? Can you hear us?
Greetings.
Yes, sir.
Trustees, a question that the Harbor Committee has that Mary Ann was trying to address for the Harbor Committee was about process, I believe. In the last week or two, we've received a lot of comments about what's going on on the west side of the wharf. And while I was not on the Harbor Committee when the original design for the wharf renovation was approved, I understand that there was a lot of discussion that went back and forth. And I'm not clear about process now. The, I understand the repair of the dinghy docks, et cetera, but the wave wall seems to be a new addition. So I guess that in process, I, the Harbor Committee was left in the lurch about this. And it would have been helpful for the trustees to let us know what was going on at least. And, and so that we can talk to our, the people who have been calling and writing us, what's going on over there? And frankly, I don't know. I, I haven't seen drawings. So I, I'm just curious about process. If, in fact, the LWRP. If, in fact, the LWRP has jurisdiction over this, there needs to be some addressing this. And I, please educate us on that process.
Well, it goes back a number of years, several years. It has been through all of the formal regulatory processes that are, including those outside the village. And the board has acted with notice on the plans, the choice of contractor, the posting of bids. There's quite a record on the history of this. As to what notices you may or may not have seen, I can't speak to that. But this has been on a full public record, which is available in the building.
Yeah, so the wake wall was part of the original approved plans?
As far as I know, there's an element, Bob, do I have this right? Isn't there a certain element of wave protection on the old part of the dock?
There is, and these plans haven't been altered at all. These plans, I think they have 14 years. Put together before I started here. So they were submitted and all the documents, the industry has swapped them, all the documents replaced from every agency that needed to be notified. And there's nothing, that wave break was there from the minute, from the time that these plans were drawn, that wave break. So I don't know what the problem.
Just from my clarification, you said these plans are 14 years old?
They, I had drawings of these in my office before I started.
A long time coming. But Bob, on the existing hard dock, below the walking platform, there is boarding that serves as a wave break. And what we've been describing here now as more wave break, if you will, is similar to and consistent with that device, which is commonly used in harbors. You'll find them in Greenport in particular, where the current is such a major factor. So that's been a part of the plan as far, as long as my information and development, it only goes back about seven years. But that, and Bob was quite correct, that has been part of the plan throughout that history. The plans have not changed.
What I would say, Will, is I understand where you're coming from because this is something that was talked about and discussed years ago and approved. But you, the current members on your board and other boards might not have a history of that. Or, you know, we've discussed it, the trustees have discussed it, and we feel like there needs to be maybe some sort of better communication between all of us to update us and say, hey, this project is coming up, this is when it was approved. These are the things that are going to be happening because the public comes to us and asks us about it.
No.
And we, you know, we want to have a concise answer for them. So.
I would admit that when people approached me about this, I was unaware of the details. I knew there was repairs going on, but you know, the idea that this is something that was approved 14 years ago is fine. But on the other hand, we're off.
I think a little graphic that could have been posted on the wharf that said your tax dollars at work, something that affect. Mind you, I'm of the opinion I support what's going on, if it's been approved in particular. I support it. But I just think the process, Tom said it, we just need to be clear. So in the future, if there's something like this going on that affects the planning board, the ZBA, et cetera, we need to figure out how to communicate that to those boards, as respective boards, effectively so that they can opine if need be, or at least be aware so they can speak to. And I can't tell you how many emails I've received about the illegal structures that are going on at the wharf right now. So information is really critical. So in the future, if we can do some little graphic of that area that is happening, it would be, I think, educational for everybody.
I'd just like to mention too, I think that it's important that it's not a one, we have a lot of one-off of this happening where there's a, you know, an apparent breakdown in communications. And I think it's more the result of we've got multi-year and in this case, maybe a multi-decade project that's been approved by various boards along the way. And while the village, the boards have all gone through the appropriate, proper improvement process and followed the right protocols, people still lose sight of what's going on and new members come all the time. And it's hard to keep track of it all, especially a multi-year project. So I think part of this is not just a communication issue. It's that we need to think about putting together long-term planning, a capital program actually, that tracks these projects over multi-years through the various boards. Right now, we don't have that set up. But with that, that, I think from that can come the communications of which boards need to be informed along the way when projects that have been dormant for a number of years come to fruition because funding is available, et cetera.
Yeah, I would just say that it's really interesting. It's kind of like the media in general. A little bit of bad news goes ballistic and real information gets hidden. So if we can work in that direction, everybody right now has that experience. So if we can be proactive in our communication, I think it's going to help everybody.
Let me just mention one practice I've had while I've been in this job. Excuse me. We have now a quarterly cabinet meeting. There was a belief in this building for years that people couldn't talk to each other very much without violating their regulatory responsibilities. But we have cabinet meeting. And that consists of the department heads and the committee chairs. Mary Ann, you've been to more than one of those, I believe. And the point is to exchange information among and between the working parts of the government. One of the problems I detected was that if you think it's a problem that the public doesn't know what we're doing, sometimes one part of the government doesn't know what we're doing either. So I think that's been fairly good. I would do it more often, but people are very busy. But we're aware of this matter. But the reality is that on every matter that comes along, somebody will complain that they didn't know anything about it. Whether that's a fair complaint or not is impossible for us to evaluate. There are many, many steps in the process of public disclosure. There are agendas here, there are meetings here. Some of you come see what's on the table. So there are a lot of ways that where people can stay informed. And on the bigger projects, they cross this desk in our public meetings. So yes, I hear all of that. And there's probably more opportunity in the technological age to get more information out there. But we cannot fully account for what people may know and what they may not know. We had a complaint one day about piles of sand when they first appeared on the Steinbeck site. The plan's been out there for five years. And that particular day resulted in a complaint to the newspaper. The information was readily available. It was part of the plan, has been there all along. So we hear you. And I'd like you to recognize that we've made some progress, at least in that cross-fertilization of information that concerns you. But I interrupted you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
I guess my comment is, is that this plan from 14 years ago has suddenly come to fruition. And we spent a lot of time, not just Harbor Committee, but the whole village spent a lot of time, all of you included, except maybe Mr. H, if you weren't here, but planning the renovation of the long wharf and expanding these docks, the transient docks by eight, number eight more slips and putting in a wave wall, never once ever became part of the discussion. And you would kind of think that when you go through a thorough renovation of long wharf, you kind of wipe the slate. And that going back and doing other things would then be treated as new projects. Just a comment, doesn't need an answer, but.
Well, I'm going to answer, Mary Ann. You say suddenly appears. That's not true. This has been around for 14 years. You just said that these two matters were never discussed. You don't know that. I did, simply not true. This was engineered, this was discussed, it was approved, it was part of an RFP. So to say that this suddenly appears, they suggest, and it's never been discussed, is simply not accurate. Maybe, but it was, may not have been discussed by you, but it has been discussed by your elected government and approved with the regulatory bodies that are out there that we have to answer to. So you're using pejorative framing here. It's not that.
What I'm saying is that the process usually involves the LWRP and a coastal consistency review, which is the Harbor Committee. It's not me, though, Mary Ann, but it's a process that involves, you know, the local waterfront revitalization plan and the many different facets that are discussed in it.
And I understand that.
The bodies that looks at that. So it's not me, but bringing up a plan from 14 years ago, I would certainly think would trigger a reexamination of the plan because things have changed over 14 years. So.
Now you're making a different point. I don't know if there was a consistency finding by Harbor way back then, nor do you. So we can find that out, but we have proceeded in accordance with everything that regulates that activity. But anyway, thank you. Anyone else? All right, that will conclude our public comment period. And we move now to, I'm sorry. Somebody else?
There was more on the other screen.
We can't see the other screen. Yes, John?
Yes, I'm here.
My own.
There you are.
I just wanted to try to clarify this a little bit. I think what Mary Ann's talking about is we did, the Harbor Committee reviewed extensively, I think on at least two occasions, maybe three occasions, the plans for the renovation of Long Wharf. And there were at least two versions of the plans. And we had to do a consistency review. I think what Mary Ann is saying here is that this should, if this was pending, it should have been included. I don't believe it's included. To be sure, I'd have to go back and look at the, and look at the plans. But it really wouldn't be appropriate to propose a lot of changes for Long Wharf while not showing to us or the public what other pending changes there were in existence. It should have been included in the, in the review that was done. There's been no review since then, and I think that was 2018 or 2019, before the renovation for the Long Wharf, you know, started. So I think that's where the, you know, where the issue is here. And also going back to old plans, by mentioning that, I'm remembering, and I've had this discussion before, that back when Bruce Tate was the Chair of the Harbor Committee, there was a review and a recommendation by the Harbor Committee that in that area that's now over near Steinbeck Park, that there be a free dock for small boats, similar to what is in Greenport. And I don't think that that's been included in the plans here.
It has. There is a free dock, there is a free dock not yet built. We refer to it as Sandra's Dock because she had proposed a, her non-power landing of canoes, kayaks, paddleboards at the west end of the beach in Steinbeck Park. It's on all the plans for at least, since Ed's very first plan. So there is a plan for it. It's been part of the discussion. And in fact, if you'd like to donate $100,000, it's part of our campaign to get for exactly that kind of a landing in Steinbeck Park.
Well, that was, that was part of it, but it was also a recommendation for small powerboats. In other words, 14-foot, 16-foot powerboats like there is at Greenport. And I'll just, you know, I'll just throw that out again in terms of old, old plans. There was a recommendation.
Look at that. I don't recall that.
Favor of. Just one brief, last question. In every report that you make on the docks, there's a report about increases in revenue. But I never hear a report about the expenses. So my question simply is, is what is the net revenue or income to the village from harbors and docks, considering all expenses, including the amortized costs for rebuilding Long Wharf, you know, doing this, the transient dock, you know, et cetera? Do we have a figure on that?
The idea behind what you raise has been raised by me since I've been a trustee. This small government does not, in its budget structure and its fiscal structure, array specific departmental expenses against specific departmental revenues. Ever has. It would be useful, I agree. The system is simply not in place for that. Because as you know, where you do both cost accounting and revenue accounting and array the two against one another, you have to calculate such things as the expenses that are shared throughout the government or through the business and so forth. But it's a point well taken. I think what I would suggest when you're talking about a million four, a million five in revenues with one harbor master and one part-time harbor master and a bunch of kids who help us run the docks in the summer, I think that ratio would look pretty good. Now that we also have expenses that based on more recent revenues are segregated for waterfront infrastructure. That's how we did the planking, the replanking of Marine Park a year ago. So baby steps perhaps, but moving in the direction of more direct relationship between the source of the revenues and their applications. When Hayden brought forward the parking, the paid parking, we created, put it in the, in the local law, a dedication of 100% of those revenues
Right.
to transportation infrastructure. So we're doing some of that grown-up stuff that hadn't been done before.
Can I ask a treasurer question just related to that, just a brief one? If you've got, if you can give us a brief answer that we, at least on the capital side, fund balances or segregated accounts for the dock, the harbor, for example, does that exist?
Again, we don't departmentalize the income. So I mean, you compare it.
Just on the capital side I'm talking about.
Capital side?
Yes.
I mean, we do have the capital expenses laid out, but we'll put it against the revenues or the surplus.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we've got some more to go. Anybody else? Thank you, John, as always. All right, now. He says again, it's the end of the public comment period. And we step up for introductions. The first listed is a local law amending paid parking regulations in Chapter 265, Section 471, and Village Code, Chapter 186, Parks and Rec, Article 1, Havens Beach, Section 186.3, vehicles to create paid parking at Havens Beach.
Hayden, that will need some explanation. We're not introducing any more paid parking. If you have a village permit like you always had, a sticker, you don't, it means there is no change for you. Last summer, we were unable to hire anybody to man the little hut there so that transients would pay their $10 as they came in. So last summer, we picked up no transient revenue at all because we were unable to find somebody to do that job. So in discussion with the chief, we decided we could use Park Mobile to collect money from transients. So essentially, if you show up in the village and you want to go in a park there, there will be signs just like going onto Long Wharf. If you don't have a Sag Harbor Havens Beach sticker, you will just go in and initiate a parking, a parking session. And in that way, we'll be able to gain the revenue that we lost last year. In investigating this, it came, turned out that we haven't raised, I think that Kate has worked for the village, said it's been $10 a day. So I've raised that to $15 a day. And so for anybody who's not a village resident or not a first responder, volunteer fire or ambulance corps person, they will pay $15 a day for the privilege of parking at Havens Beach. I don't think that's a reason. they will pay fifteen dollars a day for the privilege of parking at Havens Beach. I don't think that's a reasonable way. And we'll also lose the overhead of having the one person or two people on staff who we were unable to hire last year. So that's basically, in a nutshell, if that, what's going on there.
And we don't have formal statistics on what number of people who arrive or without the necessary sticker. So we can't project yet what this might produce, but it's at least been, it's been my sense that this is worth examining.
Yeah, we'll get some data back as to who, as to where people are coming from, which is always helpful.
You have any further questions? No, yes. So this is an introduction and we're scheduled a public hearing.
Let's, what we're going to do first is to invite the introduction.
We're just setting a public hearing for May ninth.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the introduction is complete. Mary Ann, did you want to be heard?
I did, and I'm sure that there's some fluidity here in this new rule. One thing I'd like you to consider is the people that sail there on Sunday afternoons and the people that keep their boats there, if they're not village revi- residents, I think it's up to like three hundred and fifty dollars, maybe more, four hundred, five hundred. I'm not sure because I'm a resident. But I would just ask you to think about whether or not they should be able to get a tag to access their boats because you can't really sail. You can't bring your car and all your equipment over to.
So the proposal would be, just as we exempt people with stickers, that we exempt folks who pay for storage.
So they would just get a sticker. It would be, how does that work now? If if I was to arrive up like last summer or summer before, would I have to pay at access or what was the procedure?
We worked it out with the chief and the people that were there sailing, we would give him license numbers.
Okay, I think getting a.
Little manual.
Yeah.
But I think giving people a sticker.
It's easier.
Pay their three hundred and fifty dollars or whatever would be a great solution.
I have no problem with that. I don't either. Yeah.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
What about the dock park? The people going to the docks?
Well.
It it'll operate, oh, sorry.
This is not a public discussion yet.
This is for next month.
We've introduced this. This is part of a process that perhaps doesn't get recognized, but this is putting this idea into the public domain for you to know about and to comment on, and it'll be there for thirty days and come in and talk to us again. So this is how it works. Okay. So the public hearing is set for the what is the date? The ninth of May? Next up will be public hearings. And the first of these is the proposed budget. The budget for fiscal year June one, twenty-three to May thirty-one, twenty-four. The this been the subject of a couple of work sessions. Many of you attended. And this is an open public hearing on the budget that is now formally presented by the treasurer. So
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion to is it to open or to?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to open.
Right, second. Second.
Yeah.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. We are now in an open public hearing on the new budget. Would invite any comments by trustees or questions by anybody. Okay, as I say, this has been the subject of a series of meetings. And with no further discussion, I would invite a motion to close the public hearing.
Then I have a question. Has anything changed since the last session to the budget?
I made some updates to the sewer budget, which I shared with everybody. Tim, if you want to explain those, just so everybody's.
Yep, that's the only change since the tentative hearing that we had. Hayden requested that we increase the reserves going forward for the sewer. So then we increased those reserves. I believe it was up to the number.
I think it was up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We had had a couple of really expensive repairs this year. One was the replacement of the Washington Street line. It was about eighty thousand dollars. Not to be be the no tired ground, but we spent a full fortune to grease out of pipes, out of out of some of some of the lines. And that's an ongoing problem. But at eight to ten thousand dollars a an episode, we really start to burn through. We have an aging infrastructure and we have ever increasing costs for the maintenance. Our reserve fund got down to, I think it was sixty-three thousand dollars, which is it, which will be, could be gone in a blink of an eye. So I want to start working that back up. So we we've decided we would increase the rates on the rent for commercial only, not residential. We were going to transfer some money from a unallocated fund. And there was, there was a third leg to the stool. I can't remember.
No, but just the original.
Of the original transfer we're going to do. I mean, the bottom line is it would bring the reserve up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and leave a further hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the unallocated fund. And I think as we move forward, we're going to have a bigger, broader discussion on how we are going to finance this most important piece, critical piece of infrastructure, critical to the prosperity of the village. But for now, that was the big change that we made.
Thank you.
Any other? We've been living with this for a couple of months, so I'm not always clear on when we dropped into change or.
Right.
Adapted as we went. So work in progress. And the question is, for tonight, is is the work done? We have the option of continuing the public hearing or closing and moving to the adoption of this budget. So is there anyone else to be heard? Okay, I would then hear a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Suppose the matter is agreed to. We have two enacting resolutions coming. Next, we have a continued public hearing on local law amending the village code to create a rental registry permit requirement. That is a hearing that's been open for some time now, and I will tell you that the work continues. We have struggled to find the right balance between imposing a a bit of regulation on homeowners and owners who rental, who rent, particularly seasonal rentals, but it would be important to any rental situation to increase the protections of fire and safety and and air quo- air quality and so forth. We are not done, and the proposal we're distributing now is one we've been working at, but we are not yet ready to present it in a final form.
I think we're very close.
We're very close.
I I think we're close for by by the next meeting, we'll be ready. When you start to work on this, it gets very complicated very quickly, and we want to make sure that's something that is going to work for everybody and have the and 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 be fit for purpose. So yeah, I I think by the next meeting, we we should be ready.
There was out, you know, the latest amendments are.
Oh, they are. Oh, good. Okay. Sorry, I didn't realize.
It's an ongoing public hearing process.
Right.
We can distribute it and they can take a look and and provide feedback to the board. But the major change is getting rid of the required inspection by the building department and then the the four licensed architect, engineer, or home inspector, which we heard so much feedback on at the last meeting.
Right.
So we're trying to accommodate that by having an inspection checklist instead that would be approved by the village building department, which we, I just, you know, we just produced the checklist. We sent it to the building department. We're getting a feedback from the building department. And then it would be sworn to by the property owner or a licensed architect, licensed engineer, home inspector. So that's the biggest difference.
Yeah.
For the board's consideration during this public hearing process and the public.
Yeah. And then it's likely that this will not be.
Oh, and also the board has to consider the effective date.
The effective date as to whether.
Whether it applies to this season or not.
This season or not.
I need info on that. In this particular draft, I think I said January one, twenty twenty-four.
Right.
But it's really, it's really up the board's purview, and you have to consider that and let us know what you'd like.
Okay, I think the the main goal here is to make, you know, people aware. You're renting your property. There's, there's a checklist there that you need to make sure certain things are in place, you know, and that, you know, safety is paramount. So the whole purpose of this is is to raise public awareness.
And to have people participate because everybody needs to know that they have a responsibility to participate in this. It's a requirement if you're going to, if you're going to rent your home. So and then, as we say, the last outstanding question as to what the effective date might be as to whether it's in time for this season or not. There's a lot of leases has been signed, have been signed already, so I don't know how that might affect those. Because there's some requirements in here for the tenants as well. So.
So we have a way to go yet.
I think we're close.
We're getting closer. I would just apologize. This copy we're handing out tonight is not dated. So you might, for those who've been closely following this, please put today's date on it so you know which draft that you're seeing.
So we'll just continue to keep this open.
This will remain.
Just during the public hearing.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Unless we have any input from the public.
But it remains open. All right, so is your motion second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Thank you. The motion is agreed to. Next up is a local law establishing clearing regulations in chapter three hundred of the land clearing regulations, section three hundred dash nine. This is also a continuing public hearing.
We did make changes from the last board meeting. The we heard from some members of the public last time. Or we heard, sorry. And this is also at the table, and I can go through the changes with the board. And we do need some feedback from the board because we heard competing requests from different people. And there's also feedback provided to you from the planning board on this matter as well, which is in your record. But if you'd like, I can go through the changes. It's up to you.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great to go.
I would also say folks who who pick these up to put a date on it as well.
Sorry. So the first change is adding the definition of clearing, which is already in three hundred dash two point two. But as I think Mr. Trunzo at the last meeting pointed out, it should probably be in this section as well. That is any activity that changes or removes established vegetation in its natural state within a vacant lot or previously undeveloped area of a lot, including trees and under story. And that's the current definition of our code.
So we can't, we're going to have to ask you to not speak from the floor. We have.
We added a definition for revegetation, which was not in the code, but we refer to revegetation in this code provision. So we should have a definition that was brought up as well. The next is crossed out. It's village tree. There's, this is a question for the board. There's already a section in our code which regulates street trees. And it's in section Village Code two, thirty-five dash thirteen. It's trees and fences. It says, it shall not be lawful for any person willfully or without authority to mutilate, destroy, or remove any fence, break, injure, mutilate, or remove any tree now standing or hereafter planted on any of the streets or other public places in said village. That's in the code already. So the question is whether you'd want street trees protected in this clearing law or keep it where it is. So that's something for the board to consider.
Any suggestions? It sounds duplicative to me.
Yeah, I think it's fine where it is, but I don't, you know, I've seen, I've seen other codes where it's put into this this section and it allows for you know, street trees, the preservation of, it requires preservation of street trees in clearing sections too. So but it is already in the code, so it would be repetitive to add it here. The next section is a question for the board. It's C two, and it says where the application proposes more than, and I inserted thirty-five percent of clearing. The building inspector shall refer the application to the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review for approval. And this is because prior to this, it was said, it was just at the, when it's deemed necessary or appropriate by the building inspector. So this would give it a harder trigger to be reviewed by the the ARB as opposed to leaving it entirely in the discretion of the building inspector. And that's really something for you to consider, like, you know, if it's clear, proposing clearing over thirty-five percent, it would automatically go. Or do you want to leave it in the hands of the building inspector? And that's something for this board to consider.
This is way under the block current limits that exist now. Table one, page four.
Well, that's just the trigger for additional review.
Right.
That's all. It's just a trigger for additional order. That's what triggers that. So that's something I need to hear back from the board on and maybe from the public as well. The rest are just in four and five. Those are just typos and repetitive language. Section six was brought up by, I think, Mr. Trunzo, where he was referencing planning board and subdivision. I I actually agree with him that this is a little confusing. Subdivisions are regulated by the planning board. The planning board has ample authority already to impose buffers and restrictions with regard to fertilized vegetation and whatnot. So I don't need, think it needs to be repeated here. So we remove that. Section seven, there's just additional language about the building inspector being able to impose conditions. He already has that authority and it's mentioned prior in the code. So remove that. Section D is really where it gets into the regulations itself, and that hasn't changed. You can clear up to ten thousand square foot lots. You can clear a hundred percent. For ten to fifteen thousand square foot lots, you can clear seventy-five percent of the lot. For fifteen thousand to twenty thousand square foot lots, you can clear sixty-five percent of the lot. And for over twenty thousand, you can clear sixty percent of the lot. So those are the proposed regulations. Section two on page, bottom of, on page five here. It goes over what areas of the lot are going to be exempt from clearing calculations. For the flag lots, the flag will be exempt for lots with low nitrogen wastewater treatment systems. The drain fields will be exempt from, you know, from clearing calculations. And that that was actually at the bottom, and I just moved it to the top for clarification.
Is that true currently of conventional septic systems?
Drain field. I don't know that there are drain fields for conventional systems.
It's all underground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm intrigued. Let me know, like a conventional septic tank and a leaching pool as opposed to IA.
This is just how I've seen it done for two.
Well, septic tank and leaching pool is buried underground, so it doesn't really.
My point is, is it, is that calculated and clearly, it's just the same though.
This would exempt it.
Yeah.
I I that's a good question. For non-residential lots, I, there's already a section.
I'm sorry, can I just, so our intent would be, your question is, do we want to exempt it for both? For?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
For for drainage and sewer, what you're saying, for for dry wells or?
It's not really that much. One is not that much larger than the other in reality. Now, there's the IA system doesn't take up much more room.
The fault required clear land above them.
Yes.
That's the key, I think. Yeah.
Okay, so we can add that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. For non-residential lots, I removed the sixty percent limit there for commercial lots, and and that's zoned lots, and that's because it's already in our code, in our village code. It's at the bottom of page, it's page six. You have the, it's in our dimensional regulations already. The minimum natural or fertilized vegetation resort hotel is twenty-five percent, village business twenty percent, office district thirty percent, and waterfront is thirty percent. So that was already established. So I just thought we better maintain what's already there, and that's up to the board entirely. You could take a look at those and see how you feel about it. The next thing I changed was just adding section three on page six, which went through those dimensional regulations. And instead of putting fifty percent for residences, I put as set forth in section three hundred nine point one, one, D, one, A, which is the section that goes over the percentages for residential.
That we just, we just reviewed.
Yeah, so if you're adding this code, you need to amend this section as well. And then section four is just amending the Board of Historic Preservation. Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review section of the code to authorize that board to review applications, um, referred by the building inspector pursuant to this code. If you enact this. Um, and so we did hear some feedback from, um, other parties too. They wanted us to add, um, buffers. Um, to the clearing provision section of the code. Um, and I did talk to, um. Eileen about buffers. Um, that was one of the requests. Um, and it would, it, you know.
And that would be for residential.
That would be for residential, yeah, to, to add buffers. Um, buffers are imposed by covenants which are reported against people's property and. You know, you can violate a buffer if you start putting structures in a buffer that's supposed to be kept for natural vegetation. Um, so it's not a, a, a light endeavor. You need to have, your building department. Um, has to, uh, require them. It's a process and then it gets referred to the attorney who review them. Um, and then also it's enforcement issue. Um, and buffers, um, on such small lots, um. May not be advisable. Of course, it's up to this board, but I would, you know, caution you to look at the sizes of lots in the village. Um, you know, I think they were recommending a five or ten foot buffer for fifteen thousand square foot lot. These lots do already have setback, um, regulations that, that guide us with respect to excessive structures and how far they could be from neighboring lots. Um, so I don't know that you'd want to impose buffers where someone could get in trouble if, you know, their shed is on, is on the edge of their property. Lots are just so small. And also I, I should say, the planning board, when they're creating subdivisions, has ample authority to impose buffers. And, and buffers are usually used as mitigation. So. The law upholds buffers when you're mitigating an impact of some action on a neighboring property. Right? So when the planning board is creating new lots, you're mitigating the impact of those new lots, um, on the neighboring properties by creating a buffer. Between those new lots and all the neighbors. That's an example.
I see plenty of instances where the ARB requires screening.
Right.
On property lots and, which is essentially, i- it is acting like a buffer without having the, all the legal ramifications and carryovers. Of, you know, you have to have, you know, it's going to be part of your permit.
So they do.
Certainly for commercial review for site plans. There's a lot of authority for the planning board as well.
Yeah, for commercial, but we're talking for residential.
Yeah. Okay.
That it seems to be a big part of the conversation in the applications.
So those are the questions we'll carry forward. Um, this hearing will remain open. Um, are there any folks who want to be heard on any of this? Okay.
I just want to know if you could do it something. I can't read any of these.
I, I, yeah, we can redo it with like a different color.
And what's the difference between the, um, the crossed out, the black, white crossed out or some crossed out stuff?
Prior deletions, is that right?
A prior version. So the blue is edits for, of this version. Right?
And my understanding of our buffer is that the buffer is, it's not about putting a structure on the buffer. The buffer is actually left alone.
Right. You're not allowed to put structures on a buffer. Correct.
But, but if we're talking about land clearing, does that also mean that the buffer doesn't have any, you know, clear the buffer?
You cannot clear a buffer. Correct.
Right.
Those, the covenant would have language in it to prevent any clearing on a, on a buffer.
So that's one of the decisions of yours to consider, that whether we're going to hold on to buffers.
Right.
Even even small lots.
Right.
First meeting, not touching anything, not clearing the.
It would have to be added to this law because the buffer is proposed, uh, by the tree committee or the committee of two recommended this law. I did not insert here.
Right.
Right. They recommended it, the buffer had buffers. You were talking about that one?
Yes. There's a state, yeah, there's a staggering of buffers that they recommend for, for residential lots.
But that's not in this.
Correct. They're recommending ten thousand to fifteen thousand square foot lots have a five foot or ten foot buffer respectively. That fifteen thousand square foot lots to twenty thousand square foot lots have a ten foot or fifteen foot buffer respectively.
So we consider buffers to be natural habitat on property, right? I mean, you're putting up albatross, you know, taking down everything that's there and putting up screen and albatross and not allowing the natural vegetation is there. It's a completely different, it's great, it's a completely different idea. So.
Well, is that, that requested buffer in addition to the sixty five? So it'll be sixty five percent plus the buffer?
Well, the buffer could probably, we could write it so that it would contribute to the.
To the, yes.
That would make sense, but.
I have a question. Has it, uh, from your experience, I don't want, I hate to put you on the spot, but. Has there been any challenges to laws like this, saying that? Local municipalities are violating the property owner's rights to?
Well, generally speaking, I think, um, clearing laws have been upheld. Uh, because, you know, the main goal is to protect the aquifer and, and the environment and it's an environmentally sensitive area and. Generally, they've been upheld. But for buffers, it's, it's a question, it's, there's a legal question there because like I said, it's been upheld, but it's mitigating something. It's almost exacting something from someone's property when you require a covenant and you restrict the use of their property that way, um, in such a formal manner. So i- in essence, you have to be mitigating something and you, and you have to have the authority to do so. Planning board buffers have been upheld. Of course, wetland buffers are extremely important. They've been, you know, there's state legislation enabling those buffers. Because they act as a filtration for the surface waters, right? And, and so there's, there's different authority for certain buffers. Um, but I've never seen a buffer required for every building permit submitted.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Um, this sort of triggered a thought. Um, and sometimes we find that, um, trees have been brought down. And it's like, well, we had to do that to put the IA system in. And I'm not a hundred percent sure of the process. But I think that people design the process and they take it to Suffolk County Department of Health. And I don't think there's trees on that survey. And they may push it here, push it there. And what I would like to see is if there's some way that if there's a practical solution. That taking trees down when they couldn't, you mentioned it here on page five. And you're talking about, um, number six, perhaps is with IA on-site water treatment, uh, system. That any kind of, um, shower, rain field, blah, 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 blah. Rather than, um, you could creatively think of some way that, um. It's just not the first major way that they plan for that location. Because there might be, you know, you move it coming through this way, which is going to make the IA system work just as well and avoid taking down that tree. So I leave that to you, but I suggest that we think about that as well. That that be some part of the thought process given. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the other requests was to have, um, a certain diameter of trees preserved. And that's something the board can consider.
Yes.
Was requested by, uh, the tree committee that first drafted this. And it's, so it's a, you'd have to be very specific about the caliber of tree. Um, and, um, you have to also kind of make sure who's going to go out and. Measure these trees. Do you have the staff and, and do you have the people?
As I recall, they, they made a specific number recommendation. Sizing.
Uh, I don't have that. I don't have their specific. They didn't, they just said.
I don't know what, I don't know what a caliper is, but I think they recommended a number.
Yeah.
No, I know that, but I, whatever that specific measure.
Number was.
Yeah.
I have their recommendations. I don't have a specific.
Was this an outright prohibition or was there an opportunity to replace?
Kind of remember.
It was, it was an outright prohibition, um. Requested.
With no mention of the species of tree or?
Well, they did ask that certain species be prohibited or discouraged, and that is, uh, hedges and leman's cypress. Um. But, um, they said, um. Add provisions to protect mature and specimen trees, which not only add to the historic nature of the village, but are literally irreplaceable. And so that, to do that, you can't just say mature or historic. You have to have. Um, and so, you know, I looked, I think North Haven just adopted one, um, with a nineteen inch caliber, I believe. Um, so we could look at that, but I did want the board to decide if they wanted to pursue that or if they have the staff to pursue that as well. They, they're, no native tree with a caliber of nineteen inches or greater at a height of four point five feet above ground level. American holly cedar, um, the caliber of ten inches at a height of four point five above.
That's more specific.
Tree removal permit issued by the building inspector. That's how they did it. But you need that specificity.
That specific list.
That was from North Haven's law.
That's from North.
Yeah, that's how they did it. But you need that specificity.
Right.
You can't just say a mature tree, you know.
Cast, do you have somebody?
Oh, good. She's, those are.
Let me, uh, I'm here. I'm just going to start my video. Hi, I'm Eileen Rosenberg, familiar name and face, I think. Um. I thank you, Liz, for making those revisions. I had a question and I, and I do want to go over some of the other suggestions regarding the buffers. Um, I think we all have to acknowledge that the properties in a place like Sag Harbor. In terms of size are very different from the, you know, the properties in, let's say, North Haven. However, um, if you could clarify for me, on larger properties, is it possible to put in buffers? Or is that under the auspices of the planning board?
So for, well, what I, what I was concerned about is having, triggering a buffer for building permits, right? When you, when you go to get a building permit. Um, the, the building inspector has the right to impose conditions. I don't think I've seen though where. I'd have to do some research, to be honest. I, I don't think I've seen where a building inspector has imposed a buffer. Um, in, in accordance with a, um, a building permit. I have only seen it with planning boards, um, harbor committee, you know, wetland boards. Um, and ZVA then to mitigate impacts of a variance being granted. Has requested screening, but not necessarily buffers, right? Buffers are again, covenanted, so. Um, there has to be, uh, a good rationale for the exaction, but I can look, I can look it up.
Yeah, I was thinking perhaps, and I know there aren't a lot of large lots, but there are probably. But a number anyway, that, for which this might be appropriate. So. Um, in terms of some of the other suggestions we made. Are we able to add that list of recommended? I mean, it's, it's a list that is appropriate, that was made by Sag Harbor, a list of. Recommended trees for replacements. Are we able to add that to the clearing code?
I mean, I would have it on file at the building department. I would recommend that, not codifying it, not, I wouldn't recommend codifying a list of trees.
Could that be?
Every time.
Please refer to.
Have to go change the code, like, you know.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
East Tampa did used to have a law that would make you, uh, any tree more than six inches had to be put on a survey on your permit survey. Just to clarify that we're talking about the big ones primarily, right?
They have a lot devoted to clearing. Yeah, the environment division.
So we couldn't put into this, please refer to the Sag Harbor Native Plant Guide for recommendations?
If, if it's, if, if the board would like us to, we certainly can.
I mean, it was developed for Sag Harbor and I see no reason why we wouldn't want to utilize. Those guidelines. It would seem to me quite helpful for anyone who's hoping to replant.
Eileen, if I could ask, um, I think there's a hesitation to codify something without understanding its provenance. Who, who prepared that, uh, list?
That has been, uh, prepared many years ago, prior to my getting involved. It's called the Sag Harbor Native Plant Guide and it is actually a, a document.
I have the document. It's from Matt Griswold, put me on paper.
Okay, so it's, it's had, um, um, professional input.
Yes, yes.
It could be very subjective.
Yes.
Longhand. So there's presumably some, some premise for what's involved in the list, like it's, uh, being native, for example.
This will list that Nelson Public Bornes did to the village eight four, outside of six years ago.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So then, I, I think your idea that it should be available.
We can refer to it in the law.
We can make it refer, refer to it. Sure. Okay. Eileen.
Yes, there, we had suggested that, um, once the clearing percentages are established. That any changes a property owner would like to make would require resubmission of new plans. It would seem an obvious thing to me that if you, uh, got approval for a certain amount of clearing, that must be maintained. But if it's not maintained, you need to reapply for. For permission to make changes. Is that a viable addition to the code?
Let's chew on that. I'm not sure how that would land as a practical matter.
Okay. Um, I would like to address rather upfront because I, I did, um, because, uh, Mr. Gardella mentioned. Uh, you know, the private property issue. It's something I actually, um, addressed with the planning board just today. I, I sent them, uh, an email, um, that had come up as a concern and, um. I think that, you know, there was a question of regulations and things like that. I, I think I have a couple of comments on that. Um, I think all residents of the village are required to abide by the village code and. We regulate mostly aesthetic things, um, the color of a shingle, the color of a roof, the size or shape of a window. Um, I think if we can have some regulation of aesthetic issues. It would be also appropriate to have some regulation of environmental issues. Um, and I believe that we're not telling people that they can't plant pachysemra or anything like that. But there are some environmental concerns that were not fully acknowledged, I think. Um, and I think regulations that deal with environmental issues are no different than other code regulations. Um, the other thing is that it is not only something, when you clear, it is not only something that affects you. If someone purchases a property, is a property owner and, uh. Has some sort of noise abatement and buff, you know, visual buffer from their, from their neighbor. I think more or less they expect to have that maintained to a certain degree. But when you have either a new owner, um, who comes to take down generally a smaller house. Clear cuts entirely a property and puts up a larger house or in some cases does an extension. Um, that does affect your neighbors. I think many of you may have been affected by this. So I don't think it's only a question of the property owner who would like to do something, but rather how it also impacts. Um, surrounding neighbors. And it is, I guess, a community minded thing, but I did want to point that out. It, it is something that, um, I think should be taken into account. Given the, I think it was also mentioned, this was a reaction to redevelopment, overdevelopment. Well, yes, indeed it is, um, because I think we've all experienced extensive changes in the village because of redevelopment, et cetera. And so I think, um, our community has generally been, uh, very lifestyle oriented, very community oriented. And that should continue. Um, and, uh, we have been focused on quality of life preservation issues. I mean, demonstrated in twenty fifteen when we revamped the residential code. Um, so I think it's appropriate to incorporate this particular, um, effort into the code. So.
All right, Eileen, thank you. I want to rush you along a little bit because we have quite an agenda yet to go. But, uh, this is one, we were going to, uh, keep this as a continuing process. Um, the record will remain open and, uh, these refinements, do we have?
No, I might forget about this one. You know, when you were talking about protecting the village trees and not putting this one section in this code about village trees. But I think it's very important because a lot of people don't understand, at least in national rest, there's a border outside of my, on my, looks like my property. It's not, it belongs to the village. And though there are trees on that village, on that property. And, um, you know, I know in Cadiz Road, uh, you know, they weren't, they, on the corner of Cadiz up there, they were building a new house. They cut down a lot of trees, but there were some trees that had an orange bone on it. They belong to the village property and you're not supposed to touch them. But I came back later and they have chucked, chopped those down and they said that they, oh, they got permission, blah, 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 blah.
So you want to see a specific reference to village owned? So you want to see a specific reference to village-owned?
Village-owned trees, I think, but village-owned trees have to be protected. And I, I think it's not just enough, if you're putting it, I think it's important to put it in the query section.
Thank you, Kay.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Levy, I live on Madison Street. I just want to validate what Eileen said. When we first moved into our house, we had two old trees that bordered our property with one of our neighbors. One of them was a big old horse chestnut tree. It's one of the most beautiful trees I've ever seen, and it mostly covered our property. But they felt very much like part of our property. And one day, I'd just come back from a writer's residency, and it was a huge, immense noise outside of my window, and both of those trees were being taken down. The entire property next door to us was clear cut, and it significantly affected our property. So particularly inside Harbor, where we live cheap by jow with one another, you can't see one property as being in isolation. It profoundly affects the properties around us. And it's profoundly, literally affected our property ever since.
I would just say that, that, that's exactly why we're trying to get this through. But we want to make sure that we do it properly. And that, my question to council was, because we get challenged on laws all the time. And I don't want to see something, put something in effect, and sometimes it goes all the way up to the Supreme Court. So I just want to make sure that we do protect those trees, and not at the expense of some, something else. So I just want to make sure that we do this properly. I mean, originally, originally, I think, if Eileen can remind me, the law was just for lots that weren't developed originally, when we first started this, I think under Kathleen Mulcahy's administration. And my content was that it needs to affect all, we can't just make laws for lots that aren't cleared. It needs to affect what the imposed on, in your case. So I think we've come quite a ways since then, and I just want to make sure we get it right.
Of course. I just think personal anecdotes can make these things work.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
The board did hear from the planning board as well, that had some concerns about.
There's a letter for the file, which Kate has, which we have, we had today or yesterday. Part of the record. Yes, Kate, Cass? Eileen, you have something more?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, to address what Deputy Gardella mentioned. It was never actually about only undeveloped lots, for the very reason we just pointed out. There are many houses, small houses, that will inevitably be affected by clear cutting. So we did not want to limit it, nor has it ever been limited to just undeveloped properties. So that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I, I remember the discussion, we had a discussion about it, and then it just, nothing ever came of it. It just, it's just laid there. Nobody ever picked up the mantle and carried it. So thank you for staying on top of this issue, and hopefully we'll get something through that'll protect the trees that need to be protected.
Yes, I hope so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eileen. Cass, do you have anybody else? All right, I think, as they say, we're going to keep this record open. We will adjourn the hearing tonight. It'll remain open for all forms of input, and it will be scheduled again on May 9th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I'll second it.
Well, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I thank you very much. And our last big item for the evening is a local law to amend Village Code, Chapter 300 zoning, relating to the waterfront overlay district standards. This was introduced previously, and we are in a continuing hearing. Do I need a motion here, or we just pick up?
So hearing is open.
Hearing is open.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to limit the height in the waterfront overlay district to 25 feet, is that correct?
Correct, and to amend the definition.
Of waterfront lots, correct. And, and also takes away the, sort of the bonus if you give a side.
Yes.
There'll be no bonus height. There'll be no bonus height. No, it's just, it's a hard, it's a hard 25, yeah, that's it.
Yeah. And there is, Nelson Pope Borges is here, John Ellsworth from Nelson Pope Borges is on Zoom to review the SEQA with you for this as well. And then, if the board is... I don't know where he is. He's up there. Oh, here he is.
Is John up there? Can we get him on both screens?
Okay.
Okay. John has been with us before, valued member of the environmental and engineering firm, and is going to review the SEQA history of this. This is the waterfront overlay district. John, are you ready?
I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the board. What I'm here to talk to you about tonight is the SEQA determination for the proposed legislation to amend the waterfront overlay district. Just very briefly, SEQA is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There's a list of items called type 2 items in the state regulations. For when something's on that list, you don't have to do a SEQA review. Everything else requires an environmental review under the state law. This particular legislation is not on that type 2 list, so the board is required to undertake an environmental review, excuse me, and prior to making a determination specifically to adopt the legislation, if they're so inclined, they have to adopt a determination of significance. If the board decides, and I'll go through the whole, all the paperwork that was submitted for your consideration, and then see if anybody has any questions. If the board decides based on the information that's been submitted, that there's no that the proposed legislation won't result in any significant environmental impacts, then you would adopt a negative declaration, and that would allow you to proceed in adopting the local law. It's important to recognize that the threshold for adopting the negative declaration is that there are no significant impacts. That doesn't mean that there's no impacts. There could be minor impacts, and it's in the board's discretion to decide whether things that may be impacted by the legislation are significant or not. If the alternative, if you decide that there are potentially significant impacts, that would require you to go through a full EIS process. So it's a very short menu at this point for SEQA determination. Nelson Pope and Borges submitted a memorandum to the board dated March 10th of this year, and attached to that memorandum were the three parts of the environmental assessment form, EAF. There was a full environmental assessment form, the long form, for, that contains the information on which the board can base its determination of significance. Part one of the EAF is designed to provide information on the proposed action. For legislation, however, the part one form, since it's, it's designed, it's really designed for physical projects, you skip over most of the part one in filling out the form when there's, when it's, the proposed action is legislation. Part two of the EAF is a checklist of 18 parameters that the board should consider in deciding whether there are potentially significant impacts or not. It's a 18 specific parameters, ranging from impacts on land, impact on historic resources. I'll go through all 18 of them when we get there. And then the meat of the documentation for the board's decision is the part three of the EAF. The form itself is just a two-page form that is really administrative. It identifies what the board's determination of significance is, and it has rooms for signatures and things like that. The way we do the part three, even though the SEQA regulations only require you to provide a discussion if there are potentially significant impacts, we go through all 18 items to show that we've given it the hard look, and that the board is on solid ground in making their determination. So going to the part three, digital attachment, that's several pages long, that has a narrative. It describes the proposed action, which has already been done tonight, so I won't go through that. And then it provides an analysis of the potential for impacts. Most of the 18 items on the type 2, on the part 2 list are either not applicable, or the potential for impacts is clearly either absent or negligible. And so jumping right to that. And for most of these items, most of the 18 items on the, in the analysis, the analysis is based on the fact that the proposed legislation, which will just change the the definition of waterfront properties, which is what was intended all along. It's really not even a change. It was how it was being interpreted all along. And then the two components that were measured, were mentioned earlier about eliminating the potential for waterfront properties in certain districts to get an additional one-story of height, one story and 10 feet of height, in exchange for providing public access. So those changes will not affect the degree to which the land can be developed, can provide additional height and density in exchange for the public access, but it won't affect the disturbance of the land surface. So, for example, impact on land, which is impact on soils and topography and things like that, the legislation won't affect that, because the exact same amount of land disturbance can occur, whether the building is two stories or three stories in height. Geologic features, there were no significant geologic features.
To attend. Sorry.
Surface waters, again, that is mainly affected by what goes on on the land. It's a legislation that affects land development. So, for example, runoff and the potential for sediment transport to the bay is not going to increase whether you build an additional story or not. Impact on groundwater, that's a similar parameter, where it's not going to be affected by the proposed legislation. Flooding, again, the footprint of the building is not going to be affected by whether you go up two stories or three stories. Air resources are, there'll be no effect from the proposed legislation on that parameter. I'm getting, Charlie and we'll get to the ones where we had to take a little bit harder look, because there, there is a potential for an effect on the parameters. Plants and animals, again, the disturbance of the land area and the effect on vegetation and wildlife is not going to be affected on how tall the building is. Agricultural resources, that parameter is not applicable to the waterfront area. The first parameter that, in number nine, that we took a harder look at, because it seemed like there could be an effect, and this is actually the whole basis of the proposed legislation is on aesthetic resources, again, number, number nine. And the purpose of the legislation is to retain the small-scale level of development on the waterfront. That was the impetus behind the proposal to modify the legislation. In modifying the legislation, it's important to keep in mind that the proposal will keep in place everything else in the waterfront overlay district that was adopted originally, all of the standards that are designed to protect aesthetics and other important parameters on the waterfront. So that was an important issue, which we had a little bit of an expanded discussion on. Historic and archaeological resources, again, the decision as to whether a building should be two or three stories in height is not going to have an effect on our historical or archaeological resources. The next parameter that was given additional consideration and an expanded discussion is open space and recreation, because that's what was identified as in exchange for the additional height, a developer would provide access to the waterfront. And the way we looked at that is the villagers already passed significant public access to the waterfront. The parcels that would be eligible for these incentives, there's, our analysis indicates that there were only three parcels, and that they occur in areas where there are generally, there generally is good access to the public parkland on the waterfront. So, and again, it's important to remember, I know there were, there was some input to the, that the board received that some people wanted to see this provision remain in place for public, the potential for public, additional public access in the future. But it's kind of speculative as to whether that would actually happen. And again, in the whole scheme of public access to the waterfront for the village, the determination, you would be making a determination as to whether that, losing that potential trade-off is, represents a significant impact. And again, if, in making, if you were to make that determination, the next step would be to go through an EIS process. Impact on critical environmental areas, there is a critical environmental area in the harbor. But again, this is similar to the analysis of surface waters. The disturbance of the land area would not increase under the proposed action. Next one is number 13, impact on transportation. This one actually, by eliminating the possibility of an additional story of height, you're actually taking away the possibility that a development could be more intense and can generate more traffic and require more parking. Impact on energy, similarly, a bigger building is going to require more energy. So eliminating that provision is going to reduce the potential consumption of energy in the future. Impact on noise, odor, and light. Very similarly, a bigger building has a potential to generate more noise, have more light. So the proposed legislation would not be increasing that, so there wouldn't be a significant adverse impact. Impact on human health, the, this is another one where the the proposal to eliminate the potential for a third story is not going to have a significant effect on that parameter. Consistent, consistency with community plans, this one, the, based on the, the village's desire to maintain the small-scale development on the waterfront, which is consistent with the LWRP and the other plans that have been done by the village in recent years. This would, like the proposed legislation, would have a beneficial effect on this particular parameter. And again, just to reiterate, the, the proposed action would not affect all the other standards that were adopted in the waterfront overlay district that are designed to maintain that character, including things like screening, solid waste collection areas, establishing the special exception permit approval process for buildings over thirty five hundred dollars in in the waterfront overlay district. And requirements for thirty foot minimum lot waterfront yard setback, things like that, and keeping accessory structures out of the And then the final parameter is consistency with community character, and that typically is largely related to aesthetics. So all of the reasons that support the proposed legis legislation in terms of aesthetics also feeds into the the community, community character issue, maintaining the small scale character of the waterfront. And that's it. So that's, that would be the basis of the recommendation for a negative declaration, which again is a conclusion by the board if they so choose adopting by resolution that the proposed action would not result in significant adverse impacts. And if the board adopts such a determination of significance and negative declaration, at that point, they could proceed in adopting the legislation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this point.
John, thank you. As always, when you come, I feel like I've been to school painlessly. You put together complicated subjects in a way that I can follow it at least. So thank you. Thank you very much for that. So before us, Liz, take us through what we need to do.
Well, I didn't know if other board members had questions for John and trustee Hayden.
No, I got a question for not so much for this, John, but we do have this letter from the planning board. Questioning one of the, one of the amendments. So if, is, is the planning board chair in the meeting on the call?
Yep. Oh, he said he was going to be on, so.
I just want to hear his perspective because potential, while I understand that the assessment from Nelson Poten's work is that this amendment doesn't affect anything in a significant way, it does have an impact on eight, nine, eleven, twelve and fifteen potentially. Maybe not significant enough for determination, but I'd like to hear the planning board's perspective on why they think what they're suggesting as one of these not be included is so important. Now, John Chapa.
What you think what he's saying here is that there was the incentive. If you could get to give waterfront access, you get taller building.
Right.
So this eliminates that. That's their point, I believe.
And I think that was dealt with by saying there were already three properties that we're talking that this would apply to, if I remember. That there were three properties that were in a position to offer that incentive. And given the amount of access that there is to the waterfront, that it's a balance, it's a subjective call as to how one weighs off against the other.
You wanted to hear more about the specific of the the planning board. But we don't have John. Okay.
I sat in the planning board meeting when they were discussing this, and there was a concern that, you know, they had really considered that that sort of density bonus to go up in height for the ten foot, I believe, access during their review process of the waterfront overlay district laws. And they felt that that was something that was important for flexibility and design, and it was a great way to offer something to the developer and also obtain access to the waterfront, which is so important for the waterfront overlay district. That's what I recall from sitting in that meeting. It is important to note that this is something that would have to be the desire of the, I believe, the developer, right? So it wasn't, you know, it's not entirely your choice, but it would be an incentive if they wanted to get that higher, they would have to give that.
Like the impact of of another ten feet would be much more than the impacts of pathway to the water. Throw it out there.
I'm taking a pathway to the water. Is this visual access to the water, physical access to the water?
It's physical access?
Physical access.
So a public space, for example, to walk through. Private property to get to the water.
Can we identify these properties? So that I have some IP of what it is? Yeah, I'd like to know what the properties, like where are they? But like, what is the possibility for access when you get to the water? What, what do you?
Remember, it's just the overlay district.
It's just, no, I just want to, I know. I think John identified three properties that this would apply to. Is that correct?
That's the assumption, right, John?
Yes, and I apologize, I do not, Kathy knows the the three properties. I do not know them off the top of my head.
To my understanding, it's seven eleven, two main and Malloy.
And so Malloy, right now, there's a break in access, right? You can't walk through, you can't, you don't have that access to the Malloy properties, which is what they're talking about here. Seven eleven.
Malloy is very anomalous because Malloy in a successful legal action, twenty some odd years ago, gained ownership of the underwater lands abutting to the north and to the partly to the east of his property. So the property is not currently in play that we're aware of. But it's not clear how this incentive incentivizing would be applied to that particular property because it's such an unusual setting. The two more relevant might be seven eleven and the two main, but they now would join a park.
So if we took just seven.
There was also a big demand that in the waterfront overlay district's review, you may recall that the public had wanted a restriction of buildings to twenty five feet in height, I mean, I think in most of the district, including Long Bay Street, asked us to study that.
So if you take seven eleven as an example, so the trade off would be you allow seven eleven to go to three stories and you get an extra ten feet access to the water. Is that my understanding that correct?
As written, yeah.
That doesn't seem like a good deal for the village. At all, like considering all the access that's there already, I don't think you've even noticed ten feet more access, but you would certainly notice a third story on that building.
I think, I think moving it to a hard twenty five feet is more in character of what we want trying to achieve.
Yeah, I agree too.
This was brought forward as a clarification and correction of what was put in the original overlay legislation. And my take on it was, in the time I've been involved in this, I saw the small cottage that belonged to a local family just to the east of the White Wedding Cake Building that was then owned by Bruce Davis grow from a two bedroom, one and a half story cottage into a virtual three, at least two and a half story right to the edge of the property in every direction, and even given permission to put a pool in there on the water side of it. And when I challenged that, and I was still a civilian then, ARB, the answer I was given, but it's such a sweet house. So that's when I first began to wonder what the standards were for making decisions. The next thing that happened was we began to process an effort to go via the CPF to get rid of the derelict buildings on one three five Ferry Road. And that's what's grown into Steinbeck Park. We were successful. What happened in the meantime, part of that effort is we tried to interest the then owner of the White Building in coming in with CPF as well, and instead he sold the property to a developer. And the consequence of that was a series, in my judgment, of mistakes that allowed it go to three stories. The principal one by treating the cupola as the governing height of the existing building. My view was that the governing height of the existing building was to be the ridge line, not the cupola. But by the time that mistake was made and implemented, you know, the consequences in the story. In the processing of those application for townhouses, there was an attempt to cause them to separate to create at least a visual access. And that failed in the following way, that one, it didn't carry into the order. And what the developer did there is obstructed the visual access that he was had agreed to create or was required to create. And they threw in as, I don't know what an incentive or whatever you want to call it, permission to have the third building moved out toward the water. So I think we should keep that miserable example in mind here that a curious exemption was put into this legislation to incentivize a potential developer to keep the access to the water open, where I think we have full power to legislate that in the first place. And limiting height to twenty five feet on the waterfront was, I think, has been observed here virtually universal when we were doing the overlay district. So I don't see.
So can I ask another question?
Sure.
Would it be improper to ask for both limiting the height to twenty five feet and providing access to the waterfront?
Well, the one was that you're, again, you're exacting something from someone's private property rights, right? You're taking, you're almost taking their property, but in that case, they were going to give it to you because you were giving them a bonus, an extra story.
So this would be a taking?
This would be a take, yeah. I mean, arguable.
More so than a buffer.
It would be less less easy to defend, that's for sure.
Thanks.
Yeah.
But I appreciate that question, but my my sense was, let's go back to where we started, which was we accepted a virtually uniform, a universal belief that twenty five was more than enough for what might happen, and we don't need to add this unique device in an environment that may not need it. We have, and are continuing to expand our waterfront access as we speak. And we have a live application to acquire the two main street building in CPF. That's been live for over a year. At the time, we lost the seven eleven building to the friends of Bay Street. We had a live CPF application there too. So I think we've done a lot to protect ourselves, and I think this is really a clarification correction of an anomalous provision that we didn't need in the overlay district, and we should correct it.
Another follow up question. Two main street and seven eleven are sold. Will there be any public access required through or around those properties if they're redeveloped? And what would, how much would that limit access, for example, to Steinbeck Park, essentially, if they rebuilt this?
There is public asset required in the in the original waterfront overlay district. There is language to that effect.
And we have a unique example, a tool there as well, is that we do have a right of way or easement that runs east to west, west to east, along the edge of the park and would figure prominently in any plans that anybody might try to present. So I think we're more than adequately protected in terms of protecting the access to the waterfront.
I agree.
So the next steps would be to hear from the public, and then you do have a resolution of adoption in your packets, if you're so inclined.
All right, the floor is open for comment questions.
I make a motion.
Is there anybody up on the screen?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second that.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we adopt the legislation to limit the height to twenty five feet.
Oh, wait, Liz, are they gonna adopt the neck deck first, or is that how the?
Actually, there's a resolved in the resolution to adopt the NIO declaration. It's right in front of the resolve to enact.
Okay, I apologize for interrupting.
That's all right. Thank you for clarifying.
So I make the motion that we adopt the legislation to keep it at a hard twenty five feet height.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you very much. Thank you. Think that we have less complicated subjects to finish up. Get back to where we were. So this, we move now to discussion items. Just I reported on earlier, the brush and leaf cleanup begins on the sixteenth of April and through the twenty second. That doesn't require an action, does it? It's just here as an information item. Okay, the next two items under action items are resolutions to adopt the budget for the general fund for twenty twenty three and to adopt the budget for the sewer fund. I think I'll take them separately for the record. Would hear a introduction of resolution. The first resolution under eleven one. Rob, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you. And although, is there any comment?
This is a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, yeah. Are there any questions or comments from the trustees? Is it's open?
Nope.
Anything from the community? All right. So the motion is made to adopt, I will call, or the clerk will call the roll.
Mayor.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gavilla.
Aye.
Trustee Corsh.
Aye.
Trustee Hay.
Aye.
Trustee Tom.
Aye. The ayes have it. The matter is agreed to. Thank you very much. Next up is the resolution to adopt the budget for the sewer fund, also requiring a roll call vote.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Comment, questions? Okay. Call the roll, mayor votes aye.
Aye.
Trustee Corsh.
Aye. Aye.
Trustee Tom.
Aye. Thank you. The matter is agreed to. Next up, item number three, Derek Allen requests permission to operate a commercial charter from mooring number hay oh two for the twenty three voting season. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, Jim Stewart of Kathy's Courage, Inc. requests permission to have a five K run walk fundraiser on Saturday, April twenty two from six to ten thirty AM, and permission to put a sign on Law Wharf. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Number five, Caroline Borzon of I Try requests permission to have a round trip bike trip from Channing Daughter's Winery to Amagansett on Saturday, April, Saturday, September thirty from eight AM to twelve PM, also requesting to place a sign in the grassy area of the Law Wharf. They would be traveling through the village. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Thank you. Teresa Roden, founder and executive director of I Try, requests permission to have Antigua Barbuda Hampton's Fest at Steinbeck Park and Marine Park on Saturday, August twelfth from ten to two in the afternoon with a sailboat race in the afternoon and an awards party in the evening. This is an event we've had going back to Havens Beach, and we had in Steinbeck Park last summer. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is agreed to. Number seven, Bob Bory Harbor Master requests permission to hire the following dock personnel for the twenty three voting season, the designated pay rates. Wilson Bennett at eighteen dollars an hour, Brian Brown at twenty, Leo Butler at seventeen, Patrick Caulfield at seventeen, Pierre De Plessy at seventeen, Christian Bentina at eighteen, Anthony Ponzini at seventeen, Troy Remkus at seventeen, Dominic Mizeo at fifteen, Charles Schaefer at fifteen, Henry Butler at fifteen, Cooper Helmstedt at fifteen, Stephen Ponzini at fifteen, and Michael Schaefer at fifteen ups, and one more, William McSweeney at fifteen. McSweeney, is there a motion?
I'm sorry, just continue on because it's also just finishing up.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is a dead end here. Also, Mr. Bory requests to have his hourly rate be increased to thirty two dollars per hour. Harbor Master Nick Pupo increased to thirty dollars an hour. Harbor Master Nick Pupo increased to $30 an hour. And Harbor Master Chris Tourier to $30 per hour.
I'll, I'll make the motion. I just want to say, a lot of these names are familiar last names in our community, so we haven't lost all our young people yet.
Right. It's a very court name list, actually. Yes.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the matter is agreed to, I would just say on the record that Bob and his team, Chris and Nick, and the young people they attract are doing a first rate job and seem to be coming into the season with a strong bench. So thank you, Bob and the gang for this. Number eight, Lividen Ilias requests permission to obtain a peddler's permit to sell ice cream throughout the village for the 2023 season. They've been with us before, as I recall.
Yes, many years.
10 years.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Is there a motion, is a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is agreed to, thank you. Vanessa Petruselli of the Retreat requests permission to have a cocktail party fundraiser at the church at 55 Main Street on Saturday, no, 55 Main is the.
Sorry, it's the church at 48.
48 Main Street.
Madison.
We are a pious group, but we are. 48 Madison. On Saturday, June 3, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Declan Blackmore of Summer Hill Landscapes requests permission to have their annual company picnic barbecue at Havens Beach on Friday, July 28 from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And let me pause for a minute to make an introduction of this young man sitting here. Eddie Cochran, who's been overseeing all of the very generous work that Summer Hill has been providing for us at Steinbeck Park, including the last couple of weeks, a couple of miserable days and a couple of windy days. And much of what you've seen there is a product, so Eddie, thank you. And Declan. And we promise not to crash your party or to drink too much if we do.
I didn't promise.
The move to number 11, the planning board requests lead agency status for completing the environmental review for the site plan application of Brasco LLC 132 Main Street. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is agreed to. Number 12, resolution to authorize the mayor to execute any and all disagreement, no, no, to authorize to execute any and all documents pertaining to the town of Southampton 2023 Community Preservation Fund Water Quality Improvement Program. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is agreed to, thank you. Rachel D. of Masham Muitt Park Association requests permission to have a friends and family 5K through various village streets, Main Glover, Long Island Avenue, Latham Division, Marsden, Jermaine, on Sunday, September 10 from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. She also requests to place a sign in the grassy area of Long Wharf. Is there a motion?
Have we had any feedback? Yeah.
AJ is aware of it, yes.
Yes, okay.
I just want to put in a shameless plug for the park, this is a fundraiser for the park. Friends and family, absolutely welcome, it's, it's elite runners, sometimes all the way down to fathers and mothers with their, with their children, walk, run. And the police department did a fantastic job, this is the third year of it.
I think I did this last year, I ran this.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Number 14, Richard Scavoni, Secretary of the Fire Department, requests permission to accept the application of Kiara Williams to Gazelle Hoes and that her name be placed on the rolls of active probationary firefighter.
I will make the motion and welcome Kiara to the fire department. This is the daughter of captain of the Gazelle, Kelly Bailey, so welcome Kiara, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to, thank you. Number 15, Carrie Garapi, Secretary to the Ambulance Corps, requests permission to hire authorization to hire Christopher Bacabella as a part-time paramedic at the hourly rate of $33.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Number 16, liquor license application for Think Burger to be doing business as Taco Bar at 62 Main. This is the successor to LT Burger. I said, it is, Hell Taco is the proper name. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chief McGuire requests permission for Sergeant Mike LaBrosi and Officer Kelly Anderson to attend the investigative interviewing and advanced interrogation class in Hampton Bays from May 22 to May 25.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Number 18, a resolution approving the appointment of Michael Arkinson as a part-time police officer.
I'll make the motion, also, this is one of our TCOs, another traffic control officer who is.
Stepping up.
Yeah.
Awesome. Fantastic.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ken Deeg of the SAG Harbor Launch requests authorization for the following to lease mooring spaces 1 through 4 at the west side of Long Wharf at a rate of $1,600 for the 2023 boating season. And to use a portion of the vacant lot at 45 Bay Street from June 1 to May 31, 24, 23 to 24, at a storage rate of $3,000. These are arrangements that repeat the arrangements we've had in place with Ken for many years.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Talina Mascali, Programming Manager of the Church, the one at 48 Madison Street, requests permission to have spring jubilee on Sunday, May 7, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
If I could just speak on this, that the fire marshal Scavoni had some concerns about the, I believe it was the axe throwing that was taking place, has that been worked out? Does an axe thrown trailer or something?
The challenge here is, the church is considered a single-family residence and based on our code and special events permit application, as a residence, you're only allowed to have one special event permit for a year, so this would be granting an exception to it.
I see in the process of working out these things with, you have no idea.
In the process of working it out with who?
With the applicant.
It's what their CO says, so I don't know if they're looking to make that change to that's on them, I'm not sure of that.
I have no problem with granting an exemption for the permit to do this, but I just want to make sure that the fire marshal, you know.
I would just say, before we do that, this has come up before. And the level of public activity and persons coming to and from the property far exceeds any interpretation of, of a single-family residence. So the reality is, it is not operating as a single-family residence.
If I may, though, I think they do have an approval for a special exception use permit for that paternal organization section of the code. I know they do, they have a planning board approval, so we should look at that because they have a site plan and special permit approval for that use.
Well, then I would ask if it's then necessary for them to seek exemption or exceptions for the events that they are having as an organization. But certainly, what they're asking for is inconsistent with the residential status of the property. So let's see, let's act on this, but go ahead. Just do some further clarification, if we would.
Is there going to be alcohol served there with the axe throwing?
Yes.
I will, I'll make the motion to approve it, as long as they meet the fire marshal's requirements.
I will second that.
And so I would as well. All those in favor indicate by saying aye of the resolution with the condition.
Yes, they need the fire marshal's requirement.
Yes, the requirement. Yeah, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, matter is agreed to. Number 21, authorization to accept the 2023 bank reconciliations and collateral reports for February. Motion?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution, April 27 to number 22, resolution of April 23 to pay Stephen White's. Kate, is this the end of that?
Yes, this is, we have approved him up to $10,000 and he went over, I believe, $2,371 in regards to the fire boat retrieving the grant, along with the body worn cameras. So this is just extending that to cover his last invoice and then we are good.
So he is done? Is that a blank check?
No, this is, just the 2,300 would, would.
Close out the work that he has done.
Some discussions with trustee Corsh about this, about, so I think that.
He's exhausted, he's exhausted the 10.
And he's completed the task.
Right. Everybody's whole.
All right, that's good, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number 23, to appoint Timothy Bullock as part-time village treasurer is part of his escape plan.
It's slowly unraveling. I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Over our objections, we approve. Is, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to, and actually, Tim, thank you for creating this bridge with us, it's very much appreciated. Number 24, to appoint Cassandra Schellinger. Is it, do I say it with a soft H or a S? Skellinger, I want to do it right, okay, Cassandra Schellinger as office assistant. And congratulations, this was the passing of an exam, bringing her up into this title and a very valued member of the staff at 55 Main. So congratulations, I'm happy to move the, the item.
I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Number 25, authorizing change order for the float drums for the Long Wharf transient dock replacement and expansion project. This is the substitution based on the supply chain problem we had. I'll move it.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is agreed to, thank you. Number 26, to amend Lo Sap entitlement age and the benefit years service for all of our Lo Sap eligible volunteers.
So this is, so this is to lower the entitlement age, right now, the entitlement age for Lo Sap is 65. We took a vote in the department. We would like to lower that to 62. And also, the years that you're able to participate in the Lo Sap program and contribute to it. Right now is at 40 years, we'd like to bump that up to 50, so the younger members that got in when they were, say, 18, or, or, you know, they have a chance to, to contribute more than 40 years to the Lo Sap program.
I'll make the motion.
So this is to put it on the ballot.
So I'll have to go vote.
That's good, but.
It's taken to the June 20 ballot, so.
Okay. And this is a roll call. I'll make the motion on it.
I'll second.
Kate?
Mayor.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gardella.
Aye.
Trustee Corsh.
Aye.
Trustee Tom.
Aye.
Trustee Hay.
Aye.
Okay, the matter is agreed to, thank you. Next up, 27, the chief of police requests authorization to hire Javier Gemot as traffic control officer at a rate of $17 per hour.
I'll make the motion, we'll take him, he's got a pulse, we'll take him.
Yeah. I'll second that.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matter is agreed to, number 28, authorizing an amendment to the existing agreement with Cameron Engineering. I think you might just say a word on this.
Kate.
Sewer shed L, we for $18,000 to cover the additional surveys that took place. So this is just bringing his agreement forward and not exceeding the purchase order. So we can make all the payments whole.
Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to, thank you. Resolution, appointing the village deputy registrar, Connie McGrath.
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second it.
This is, involves some grim duty, including the processing of death certificates. So you've, is there a motion?
Matter of motion, Aiden made a motion, I second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number 30, to award the 2023 launch service to Kenny Deeg, fellow we just talked about before.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mercifully, section 12, we have four motions for warrants to pay amounts as listed, warrant number 46, 47, 48, and 49, I would ask you to move them on bunk altogether. Is there a motion?
Second.
Aiden, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us to a closing public comment session, is there anybody left awake, would like to be heard from? Thank you for hanging in there. Welcome.
Thanks, I'm Kate McDonald, I reside at 84 Main Street. So I believe this would be an initial.
And this is your security guard?
Yes. So I'm requesting a special parking permit, like in the form of sticker, like similar to a peach sticker, that would allow for year-round residents of Main Street, specifically those living in the business district, to be allowed to have extended parking times in the Bridge Street lot as well as the Central Street lot for up to three days.
I think it's something we should consider for the residents that live on Main Street. I mean, they're having a difficult time finding parking spots and.
Meadow Street, Meadow Street lot is the one behind the banks.
Correct.
There are some restrictions in there, yes, I know that. And how the village gets to have that lot, that would need to be investigated, and my feeling is that that would not be possible. In that lot, we can dig into it. And we already have three-day parking at the Gas Bowl lot and on the Cross Street lot, is that the correct one? Yeah, so there's two lots where we have three-day, we have three-day parking. I would have to, I would have to think about this a little bit as to like what times of the day would be available. Are we talking about taking up these parking spaces all day, every day? As to whether they're in the first place as a shared space of the village? I'm not saying I'm against it, but I just need to think about it.
Tell us what you do now. How do you, how do you manage now?
We do not have like a private parking spot, so we park in usually the Bridge Street lot. It's just been really difficult because, well, I work 12 and a half hour shifts, I'm a nurse, so you know, especially during the summer months, it's extremely difficult to find a spot, you know, I get home sometimes at 8 o'clock.
When you, when you talk about the Bridge Street lot, you're talking about the old Gas Bowl lot, the gravel lot?
No, the lot, well, I, both, I mean, I try to park in any of those lots. But, you know, we try to park primarily in the lot, the one that's behind, like the 5 and 10.
Yeah, which has, which has one row.
Yes.
Of the longer term.
Right, you know, it's a little, it's a challenge, because a lot of people don't even know that that road's 24-hour to begin with. And there's just such, there's so many people here, it's always really difficult. Additionally, like, I don't really like to park in the gravel lot. And I leave at like 5:00 a.m., it's pitch black, you know, it's kind of a little bit of height from the apartment, you know, not super treble. Parking like that distance in the morning, so.
Well, thank you for reminding us to address this, we've struggled with it in the past.
I think it's something we have to look at, because, I mean.
As things get tighter and the need gets greater, there's got to be a way to do this. The stickering world is complicated in its own right because of residents, non-residents, all kinds of other parts. But thank you, and you're good to come up and.
Yeah. Yeah, and raise it, we'll see if we can find a solution, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much, everybody, and would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye, thank you.
And you bet your butt.